Welcome to the 1,957th Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Council. I will call this meeting to order and with us tonight are some Wolf Scouts from Cub Scout Pack 907 who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Scouts, come on up here, stand right up here and we're ready when you are. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job! Okay, Scouts, I just want to, I want to tell you how proud we are of, of you here in Livonia for being good citizens and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I've had the opportunity, being the father of one of these scouts here, do a lot of really cool things with them, so we're thankful for the parents who participate and, and schedule great events and help us to do great things like camping and even things like bottle returns. Who did the bottle return last weekend? Was that fun?
Yes.
All right, parents, was that fun? A little bit less enthusiastic, but we want to thank you and want to wish you the best of luck. So Mrs. McIntyre here, she has two Eagle Scouts?
One.
One Eagle Scout. So it's a really hard thing to, to get to, so we're planning on at least a handful of you getting there, all right? So thank you very much and you're all set. You, you don't want to stick around for this boring meeting, I don't think. Ask your parents.
Ask your parents.
Okay, so, welcome to the 1,957th Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting and the minutes of this meeting will be approved at the regular meeting on Monday, December 5th of 2022. Ms. Nash, will you take the roll, please?
Councilmember McCullough?
Present.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have all members of the council present this evening. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes of November 2nd of 2022.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Donovan, support by McCullough. Are there any additions or comments on the minutes from the council? Any additions or comments on the minutes from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on the minutes, please?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, Ms. Nash is going to give us a recap of the election process that took place this last Tuesday. Ms. Nash?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, great job, Livonia. You came out in record numbers and I want to really say a thank you and I think everyone should say a thank you to the election workers because without them, none of us can do this, okay? And when I was talking to the scouts earlier and they were talking about what's important to vote and I says it because it's your voice, well if those workers weren't out there on Election Day, we wouldn't be able to exercise our voice and how important that is. So if you see an election worker, say thank you because they get paid a little, but it's basically a volunteer. So what I want to say is what we had is record numbers for a midterm election. We had 53,227 people vote. Of that number, let me get my numbers here, let's see, of that number, 28,304 were in-person voters on Election Day, which was 53% of the vote. And on absentees, we had 24,923 absentees returned, which was 47%, which puts us a little different than other communities. A lot of other communities had more than 50% in absentee, so Livonia still came out on Election Day, which is good, too. We had a return rate for our absentees of 96.63%. That is huge. That is really a good number. I was getting a little worried coming into the weekend before because we were, we were less than 80% with the weekend prior. So the, the ballot started coming in on Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday and we got up to almost 97%. So again, thank you, Livonia, for coming out and voting and thank you, most importantly, to the workers who came out and worked and did this so all of us can exercise our right and have our voices heard.
Mr. President.
Ms. Toy.
Mr. President, if I may, I just want to make a, a comment. I was able to be at City Hall that evening till about 12:30 or so with this very hard working clerk and her staff. It was amazing over at the senior center where they, you know, have all the other tabulators, et cetera, over there. It's just amazing the work and the amount of people it takes to count those votes and we're very fortunate that we have a clerk and her staff that does a superior job here in our community and she knows how to count. She didn't go to Bentley High School, so that's great. And in all, in all kiddingness, or lack of kiddingness, I just have to say kudos to all of them. Thank you for voting, everyone that voted, and super election. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. It's a long day and I was here at 5:00 in the morning and I didn't leave here till 5:00 in the morning, 5:30, and then I was back here by 7:00 and then I was here. It's, it doesn't end at 8:00.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. So at this time, we also have with us in the audience our, our new state representative, Stephanie Young. Representative? We, we, we have to, although I'm sure she appreciates it, we gotta kind of refrain from cheering and stuff during, during situations here. So Representative Young, you are not a new representative, but you're going to be new to us starting January 1st, so this is a good opportunity for you to introduce yourself to all the people at home, the 15 that are watching or seeing us here. So Representative?
Very good. Well, thank you, Mr. President, and to this distinguished body. I am Stephanie Young. I am currently a resident of the city of Detroit. You guys know that after redistricting, the lines changed and so I was drawn into South Redford Township as well as southeastern Livonia. And I will tell you, on the campaign trail, it's been amazing. I, I call it expanding territory and really getting an opportunity to meet new people, to find out about different interests and about how we're so much alike. The bottom line is, we are all Michiganders and so the work that I plan to do will benefit all of us. So I just wanted to take a moment out just so that you guys get an opportunity to meet me and then I look forward to meeting all of you all as well and working together to make Livonia the best place that it can be here in the state of Michigan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we have one more special presentation. I'm going to call up our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, Ted Davis. Mr. Davis is going to give us an update about a, an event that took place this summer and I think he's got, he's going to be receiving something on behalf of the city as well.
I believe so.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President Jolly. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. I wanted to bring Dan West, our Chamber Director, forward. Hopefully some people realize that during this past summer, for the second year in a row, we did a, an event at Ford Field called Love Livonia. Live bands, adult beverages, just a good night out and the Chamber has been a great partner for us on these events. We're also doing Night of Lights coming up here in Greenmead, so on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays in December, so be sure to get on out there. But I wanted to bring Dan here and Dan has a, a small, well, not small, but a, a check for us for all the hard work.
So, President Jolly, members of council, again, we appreciate the partnership of Livonia Parks and Recreation to do these events and this year with the Love Livonia Party. Thanks to the generous contributions of many businesses in the community, we were able to have a profitable event and part of that profit, we're going to share back with the city with a check for $2,000 back to the Livonia Parks and Recreation Youth Scholarship Fund. So those who cannot afford Parks and Rec programming, there's additional resources for them in the community. So, Mr. Davis, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. West, and the Chamber of Commerce for being a great partner always. With that being said, that concludes our special presentations. We will now move on to audience communication. The council sets aside 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for the audience members to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. So if there is anybody who would like to address the council on items that are not on the agenda this evening, please come up to the podium at this time. Is there any audience communication? Going once, going twice? There is no audience communication tonight. I will move on to council communication. Is there anybody on the council who has any updates or announcements? Ms. Toy?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I, I hate to be always the one or one of the ones that brings forward notices of people that are, have left this earth or, and we want to recognize them. Jerry Smith was choir director over at Bentley High School. Those of you that don't know where it is or was, it's where our rec center is currently and it sat there for many years and in the late fort, well, actually the first class, I believe was in the 50s. Mr. Jolly will remember that, I think. Anyhow, in all seriousness, Jerry Smith was just an outstanding vocalist, talented, talented person. He succumbed to cancer just a couple days ago and I want to thank Dave Vargan, our mayor's office, for notifying us about that and some of the Bentley alum. He was well-loved. Those of you may know, know him or his family. And the funeral arrangements will be this Friday and I just would like to ask for a few moments for a very special, talented person that'll long be remembered, Mr. Chair, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. We'll just take a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. It's nice to see so many happy faces here at City Hall. And quickly, just to the Chamber of Commerce, great work and thank you for your dedication to the small businesses here in the city of Livonia. The Chamber does phenomenal work representing small businesses and representing the city of Livonia, so thanks for that check to Parks and Rec. Also, I'd like to say Happy Veterans Day. On Friday, we celebrated Veterans Day. I'd like to say Happy Veterans Day to my fellow veterans, Scott Morgan, and all the veterans within our community. I know there are a few events throughout the city and, of course, across our country, so thank you to all the vets that have served, making this the greatest country in the world. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. McIntyre?
On November 21st, we will, I'd like to recognize a very special birthday. Former Mayor Jack Kirksey will celebrate his 95th birthday. And Mayor Kirksey served the city as mayor for 16 years. He had an eight-year term and then was, we had Mayor Angerbretson and then Mayor Kirksey ran again and served us for another eight years. And he was a, had a distinguished career as a Air Force Colonel. He was a principal. He was just an exceptional man and he loved this community. He loved the people of this community and we all owe him just a debt of gratitude for everything he did for the city and the way he conducted himself during his 16 years in office. So Mayor, if you're listening and watching or watching, we wish you a very, very happy birthday on the 21st. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre, Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple updates. I know the last meeting, I did speak on behalf of the Seedlings Auction that was recently completed and I think a few of the people in the audience right now, we did have a little competition going between the mayor and Friday musings and I'm happy to say that I did not come in last. We'll, we'll leave that up there, but a lot of money was raised for an incredible cause. They had everything from indoor skydiving to a safari park in Port Clit in Ohio, so someone is a huge lucky bidder at $160 to spend the evening with myself at Coach's Corner, so that is, that's a deal, so.
Did anybody actually sign up for that?
Yes. What poor person was that?
It was me. No, I'm kidding. But no, it was a wonderful time and they did great. Also, some big news. Save the date. January 29th, the Livonia All-Stars will take on the Detroit Red Wings alumni in hockey again. Contractually, we are obligated to lose, but for everybody out there, all the funds will go towards Livonia Kids and Families and it's basically a spectacle to watch us just get beat up by the Red Wings. So be there, 1 to 3 at Eddie Edgar.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. The hockey game was a lot of fun if you went last year. Hats off to Council McCullough. I think there's actually an award for the hardest hit on Council McCullough as well, so we'll look forward to see that.
It's a dinner at Coach's Corner through Seedlings.
And that, that award is sponsored by Mr. Donovan. Okay. If there's nothing else from the council, I'll recognize that we also have two other birthdays coming up in the next couple of weeks from our City Hall, City Hall family here. We have Deputy Clerk Lori Miller will be celebrating a birthday and also Mr. Davis of Parks and Rec will as well. He's not quite 95 yet, but we plan on seeing him here until he's about 95 and then we'll release him from his service. So with nothing else to say, at this point in time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight is items 1 through 10 that were previously studied at the regular meeting of November 2nd and found to be requiring no additional study and were placed on the consent agenda for one vote. At this time, I will entertain a motion in regards to the consent agenda. Council?
So moved, approval.
I'll support.
Motion to approve by Barr, support by McCullough. Does anybody in the audience have anything to address the council in regards to the consent agenda? Going once, going twice? We have none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on the consent agenda.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Items 1 through 10 are approved. We will move on to unfinished business, starting with item number 11, which is a report out of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on October 26th of 2022. I will be giving that report. Item A in the meeting that evening was the subject matter of alternative ways for re, or recognizing various groups of the community, put into the Committee of the Whole by Council Resolution 249-22. This meeting started at 7:05. There was discussion led by Councilmember Brandon McCullough regarding ways to recognize various groups in the community. Councilmember McCullough, at that time, offered a motion for the administration to provide details and ways to recognize holidays, events, and other items pertaining to various groups in the community. Mr. McCullough, would you like to offer that motion at this time?
I would.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by McCullough, support by Toy. Is there anybody on the council who would like to address that? Anything, Mr. McCullough?
Yeah, just, just very brief. We obviously, this, this is going back to a meeting, I want to say, in the summertime about ways that we, it was very broad and basically trying to find ways that we could be better and more welcoming community at all. I was actually kind of put it out to the people at that group at that meeting to come forth with some ideas and we had some good audience comment during the, the Committee of the Whole. I think that the best course right now would be to send that back over to administration and see what they come back with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Anything else from the council? Any audience communication on that motion? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote, please?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes and that item for Council Resolution 249-22 will now be out of committee. We will hold no further meetings on that as this has resulted in a motion here at the regular meeting. Item B on October 26th is the subject matter of a Civil Rights Nondiscrimination Ordinance, Council Resolution 312-22. A proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance as amended from the Department of Law to add Chapter 65 to Title II in order to streamline the process for reporting discriminatory behavior in our community, expand protections for those who face discrimination, and make a clear statement about our values as an arms-wide-open community. When this matter was taken up at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, a presentation of the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance was given by Mayor Brosnan, City Attorney Paul Bernier, and Director of Government Affairs, LaShawn Thomas, along with the Human Relations Commissioner Haytham-Furcuri. We had a lot of members of the community speak in regards to this matter and share their opinions. At the meeting, Councilmember Scott Morgan offered a motion and Councilmember Brandon McCullough also offered a motion. And Vice President Laura Toy requested via motion some additional information. Council, would anybody like to put forward a motion at this time in regards to this item?
Council President?
Mr. McCullough?
I'd like to offer a first read.
Uh...
On my, the, I think it's, is it labeled the second motion?
So I think you offered at the meeting a, an amended version-
An amended version.
-of the ordinance to include a mechanism for penalizing false reports-
Correct.
-of such behavior that's covered in the ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Does anybody in the council have anything to say in regards, well, actually, do we have support for that motion? Oh, it's a first read, I'm sorry. It's a first read. Any additional comments from the council in regards to the first read? I see none. Is there any audience communication in regards to the first read provided by Mr. McCullough?
This is B?
This is B.
Okay.
So come on up, but don't talk just yet, if you don't mind. So because this is an item on the agenda, audience members have two minutes to address the council in regards to this matter, to share their opinions. I'm going to go to Mayor Brosnan first in regards to this item to give us some information. Ms. McIntyre, as the council parliamentarian, will notify members of the audience when they've reached two minutes. So we're going to ask you all to respect not only the time limit, but also respect each other. I understand that this is an issue that people have some significant feelings on, but our process is going to work better here and it's going to be a better meeting and a better outcome if we all respect what each other is saying and kind of go through the process so we can all listen, okay?
I do have a question. Is the mayor subject to the two minutes or is the mayor speaking as the audience? I want to be clear. I don't want to show any disrespect here.
Thanks.
Mayor, are you speaking as the mayor?
I'd like to be here as the mayor. That's usually the job I-
Okay. So we'll go to the mayor-
No clock.
So no, no clock for the mayor. So we'll go first to the mayor and then we'll go over here.
Thanks, President Jolly. And council, I wish to thank you for your continued work and your consideration of creating a nondiscrimination ordinance. Clearly, the first reading tonight allows us further conversation on this and I really do truly appreciate that on behalf of the city. I know that you, along with me, recognize the importance and the sensitivities around these conversations and ultimately, I think as a group of elected leaders, that we're more in agreement than we think we are regarding this issue and the policy around it. You know, for over a year, there's been this steady drumbeat of conversation, meetings, and calls between individual council members, my office, the city's law department, and all of them have been focused, many of them have been focused on, on this proposal. Each of you is to be commended for your generosity in spending time with me, sharing your thoughts over the course of at least eight foundational meetings that were held long before this ordinance reached the stage that it is in tonight. And throughout our conversations over the past year, your feedback has been really reflected in this ordinance. And whether that's providing more direct language around religious freedoms, I wish to thank Councilman Barr for that. Whether it was advancing our shared belief that we need to centralize our investigations, moving them away from the Human Relations Commission to moving them to the law department, I want to thank Councilwoman McIntyre for her early advice and support around that. And now, in the latest draft of the ordinance, making it abundantly clear that we will prosecute intentionally false claims. I want to thank Councilman McCullough for placing that emphasis in the ordinance. Along the way, we've learned a lot about existing state and federal law and since our discussions began, the Michigan Supreme Court has ruled that the Elliott Larson Act includes protection against discrimination for sexual orientation, closely following the U.S. Supreme Court's 2020 decision, thereby aligning our state and federal laws and ultimately making our job a whole lot easier when trying to decide whether, what protected classes we are going to include in this ordinance. We've learned what's working in other nearby communities like Westland, Canton, and Farmington Hills, where they have nondiscrimination ordinances that are already in place, that have not resulted in additional legal work because they've had no cases, cases where the ordinance has been violated. And I want to thank Council President Jolly, in particular, for reviewing those ordinances and speaking with a number of those leaders in other communities. You know, in looking at these ordinance that we've identified some areas where those ordinances could be improved and we've crafted one that is unique to Livonia and I think that was work that was well, well advanced. I think it's vitally important that as our discussions move forward and you move into this second reading, that we focus on how we as a city can come together to grow as this arms-wide-open philosophy that we talk about. And in that discussion, I really think there's quite a bit of agreement around what should be included in the ordinance. And I appreciate that as you've entered into these discussions, you've remained true to some really critical points. You've remained true to not taking any more authority than the state or the federal government is providing in the Elliott Larson Act. You've continued to focus on public accommodations as the central area of coverage for the NDO ordinance. You've understood that there needs to be an update to this ordinance because the last time we did it was in 1982. You've understood that centralizing oversight and enforcement of the ordinance into the law department is a valuable tool to provide the city. And you've understood that providing real protections for our residents and our businesses at the local level, that we can do that at the local level when there are local remedies, but you've also agreed that if our remedies are not present at that level, that we should move things on to the county, to the state, or to the federal level. So it's my hope that we can continue to move forward with these shared commitments in mind. My commitment to all of you is that this administration stands ready to continue conversations and to continue welcoming your contributions to this ordinance as we see it move to second reading. Our goal is to make sure that the council's input and our community's voice are driving the, are the driving force behind this ordinance. You know, this ordinance, along with the historic change that you're going to be voting on in Agenda Item Number 16, are important tonight. Item Number 16 is the request to approve the city of Livonia ASME Union Contract for Local 192. And it is proof that working together, we can make changes in our community that better reflect the values that we hold dear. As I'm certain you are all aware, Item Number 16 approves the Local 192 contract and with your approval tonight, for the first time in the city's history, we're going to recognize Martin Luther King Day as a city holiday. Local 192 is to be commended for their willingness to engage in negotiations that resulted in this change. I think it's also interesting that the story of how Martin Luther King Day became a holiday is a story that's probably worth sharing tonight because quite frankly, it reminds me a lot of where we're at in the story of the nondiscrimination ordinance in our city. The MLK Holiday was first promoted by a labor union. After the death of Dr. King, two U.S. Representatives, one a Democrat and one a Republican, introduced a bill in Congress to make it a national holiday. The bill first came to the floor of the U.S. House of Representatives in 1979 and it fell five votes short of succeeding. There were two main arguments, two main reasons. One, it was going to be too expensive. The second, there was no other person that was not an elected official at that time who had a holiday that was built around them. At that time, only George Washington and Christopher Columbus had holidays. Soon after that, the King Center looked for support from the corporate community and the general public. The success of the strategy was then cemented when our musician, Stevie Wonder, released the single "Happy Birthday" to popularize a campaign in 1980 where there was a peace rally that was held in 1981, which spawned a movement for a petition and one of the largest petitions that was ever signed in U.S. history. President Reagan opposed the holiday originally, cited the cost as a major concern, but then, on November the 2nd, 1983, he changed his mind and he signed a bill proposed by a Democratic representative to create a federal holiday honoring Dr. King. The bill passed the Senate by a count of 78 to 22 and the House of Representatives passed it 338 to 90. The holiday was first observed in January 20th of 1986. I love this story. It starts with an obvious advocate. Its mission is to bring people together of different backgrounds around a common value of inclusivity. Some of the characters in the story changed their mind. The authors of the story weren't afraid to fall because in the end, they knew where The authors of the story weren't afraid to fall because in the end, they knew where the country's values resided, and they trusted that they would prevail. It took over seven years to pass the bill. Obviously, it is my hope that it does not take seven years to pass this piece of legislation. But if it takes a little longer than just tonight's meeting or a meeting after this, I want you to know that this, this administration stands committed to this process. As always, I stand ready to join you in working to do better, to bring better to our community. And I thank you for taking this step tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. McIntyre?
Yes, we appreciate the comments from the mayor. I'm, it's great to learn that the mayor's looking for input on this because the NDO that we have in front of us is exactly where we were two years ago and what we got from the mayor. And there have been many discussions, attempted discussions with the mayor to shape this and address concerns, not just from the council, but from constituents, both individuals, businesses, nonprofit, religious organizations. And the mayor has been unwilling to engage in any discussions with the council. We've been phoned by surrogates, but that's, that's where it stopped. So I'm very, very happy to hear this from the mayor tonight, that she's willing to listen to concerns. And also, one other thing, mentioning about 192, this will be the first time we've celebrated MLK Day in the city. I believe the Livonia Housing Department celebrated the MLK Housing Holiday for a number of years, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. To audience communication, good evening. I told, I told you all the rules for this, two minutes. I have to start off by asking you your name. Please tell me your name, and I'm gonna ask you your address as well. If you're not comfortable with that, you can just tell me Livonia, or I'd rather not say. Good evening, your name and address.
Betsy Calhoun, 33023 Granada. As a longtime Livonia resident who's raised my family here, I'd like to express my fervent support for a meaningful non-discrimination ordinance in our community. We know that our fine Livonia Police Department and our Chamber of Commerce are in favor of this ordinance as are other major business interests in the city. All these groups are well-informed and paid attention when it was explained by better minds than mine how such a statute would work in actual practice. As our police chief says, it's a common sense measure to keep us all safe. The most consider, significant consideration naysayers need to ponder is the optics of the situation, which are decidedly bad if such a measure isn't approved. I mean, who votes against non-discrimination? Is that the kind of image our community wants to project? Livonia needs to attract a diverse and vibrant population in order to remain competitive and relevant. You can wrap the debate in the semantics of preserving interests of small businesses all you want, without having actually conducted a survey of their opinions. But at the end of the day, rejection of an NDO looks rigid and unwelcoming. Livonia doesn't need to be in the news for the wrong reasons. It's a really sad example for everyone if our leaders can't get behind being the I in kind. I think you all care about Livonia, but elected officials must be willing to reflect our populace's needs and desires, not their own individual agendas. Please step up and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Come on up to the podium. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Marcel Santes and I represent Masco Corporation. I am the leader of their Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee. At Masco, a Fortune 500 company headquartered in Livonia, we're committed to treating our environment, both inside and outside our walls, where employees, customers and community partners are treated with dignity and respect. We loudly applaud the work being done by the city to build a more inclusive community and support your efforts to treating all people with respect. However, it's obvious that Livonia's existing ordinance is extremely out of date. Instances of discrimination happen everywhere, and unfortunately, even if we don't want to admit it, they happen in Livonia. This doesn't make Livonia a bad place to live. Livonia's a great community. I used to live here myself. Why wouldn't we wanna be greater? Why wouldn't we wanna be perceived as and actually be an arms-wide-open community? Adopting the NDO is a tangible action Livonia can take to improve protections for residents in a way that exemplifies our values. I wanna reiterate that an NDO is not only important to promote respect and equity, but is good for all businesses, small and large. In order for businesses like Masco to attract and retain talent, it is imperative that we have an arms-wide-open community. While we can impact how our employees feel at work, employees decide every day to stay or leave a company based on whether they feel welcome in the community, where the business is located. The interactions they have before work, during lunch and on the way home influence their decision to shop in Livonia and work in our city. I thank you for your leadership as we work together to allow everyone to be their whole selves while they work, live and play in the beautiful city of Livonia. On behalf of Masco's executive leadership team and as a strong community partner, we ask the council to enact the proposed NDO and take this action so that Livonia employers can continue to win in the marketplace. Thank you.
We'll go to the side over here. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Teed, T-E-E-D, and I'm a Livonia resident. I have, I'm new to Livonia. I've been here for about a year and a half. Not by choice, long story of events I'll share with you on another day. When I learned that Livonia was where we were moving, I was concerned. I grew up in Detroit my whole life, heard bad stories about how unwelcoming Livonia was. My family is biracial. I immediately gained fear around that as well. Was it really the right place to be? I moved to Livonia and was greeted by "Livonia is Kind," all these signs everywhere, and thought, okay, Livonia maybe has changed. Livonia might be the right place for us. It made me feel good. I had some really good interactions with people both in person and on the Livonia Community Facebook page. I even found a little part-time job through that work. I was, I couldn't believe that Livonia didn't already have a non-discrimination order. So I'm here tonight to speak in favor of a non-discrimination order. I really wanna thank you, Mayor, for your comments. And it happens that I came in and sat next to the mayor and didn't even know it, and then she shared this beautiful story.
I have to have you address your comments up to, to me.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I, hearing from the mayor makes me feel more that I'm in the right place. And the council president, I'm assuming Kathleen in the center. Jim, I'm sorry. Kathleen, I appreciate you're interested in working on the non-discrimination order. A couple of things that I heard the mayor say that he just wanted to pull out, and then I'll, I'll stop. It came from the community, and the community voice is still important in the final non-discrimination order. And so I also wanna say, when I was walking up and saw a patient under the Kind today, I thought, how patient do we have to be? It should've happened already. But tonight, I wanna encourage the patients of maybe not voting on it tonight-
Two minutes, I have to stop you.
And having some more discussion with community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, your name and address, please.
Good evening. Mr. President Jolly, Dan Liebel, proud corporate citizen from NYX. We're located on Plymouth Road and several other facilities in the city.
Welcome, sir.
I'm the CFO and Executive Vice President of NYX. We're a tier-one supplier. We have more than 2,000 employees in Livonia. We have been a top-five employer in the city of Livonia for more than a decade now. I also am on the Board of Directors of the Livonia Chamber of Commerce and a former board chair of that body. If I could, there's been a lot of discussion on the social justice portion of this. I would like to limit my remarks just to the business perspective. At a very high level, the Bureau of Labor Statistics has said that there's 10.7 million job openings in this country and roughly 5 million job openings, uh, job seekers today. That's more than two job openings for every one job seeker in this country. Demographics are continuing to be more and more difficult relative to finding labor in the marketplace. The long and short of it is the, the companies, the communities and the cities that win in talent ultimately will win in economics. NYX specifically, as I said, we have more than 2,000 employees in the city. At any given time, we typically have 200 open positions that we just can't fill. There is a correlation between inclusivity and a company's ability to attract talent and retain talent. Some quick data. According to Bloomberg Business, companies engaged in inclusion initiatives are 2.3 times, have 2.3 times higher cash flow than companies do not. According to McKinsey Global Institute, there, that studied more than 100 global cities, inclusive cities had an average-
Mr. Liebel? I have to cut you off.
Mr. Jolly, I'd like to move that we give Mr. Liebel another minute since he's representing the support committee.
I, I appreciate that. I, I'll, I'll cut off the statistics. I can tell you that I, I did think it was important to bring data, and I understand it's time-sensitive.
Do we have to take a vote on that?
Do we need to take a vote on that?
Just procedurally. I'm in support of it, just procedurally.
You haven't in the past taken a vote on such things.
The majority rule, the council member, council president can do it by a show of hands if he wants rather than a formal vote, I think.
If nobody objects, we'll give Mr. Liebel an additional minute starting now.
I will not go through all my different data points. I just wanted to share that there is data that supports that inclusivity does relate to employee retention and recruitment for companies in this important search for talent. I would like to say that Livonia's always been a very business-minded community. They've always had cooperative and competent government, good city services, administrative assistance for our growth and development, and a good competitive tax structure and cost structure for us to grow and develop in. I would encourage us all to continue to keep that positive environment for businesses. And this would be the next step to make sure that we have access to talent, to make sure that this is an arms-wide-open, inclusive city. I would also like to thank the council specifically. I know that you had an opportunity to, you could have taken up a vote to kill this ordinance, and you elected not to, even though you probably had the votes to do so. I take that as a good sign that there's still good faith discussions, negotiations in finding a good solution and a good NDO path forward. I thank you all for those initiatives and all those conversations that you continue to have.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, your name and address, please.
Hi, Chris Hench, 9812 Cranston. So Families First, that's what it says on the signs, you know, when you drive into Livonia, I guess it's a motto or a tagline. But I wonder, does it really, are you really talking about all families being first? How about families with kids or family members with disabilities, like my family? How about families with people of color in them, like my family? How about people with family members who are of different religions, like my family? How about people who are deaf, like I have in my family? Are they included in Families First? How about people with gay people in their family or transgender people in the family? Or is Families First, does that only refer to people who are white, straight and able-bodied and Christian? Or will we really mean it when we say we put families first?
Thank you. Good evening, your name and address, please.
My name is Pamela Olds. I live at 33031 Summer Street. Hi, guys. This is my first time here at the city council building. I too have a biracial family. I too have gay and straight people in my family. I have been in this city since 1953. I was born here over on Woodring Street at Roycroft. And my thing is, is there not a federal and state laws that cover these issues? And being in the Livonia area, not running out any small businesses that might be taken in by this ordinance? I wonder, being in a family situation where I have all these things in there, I haven't seen anything like that. I wonder how many problems there's been in Livonia? Just, I don't know who I would ask that. But just, just my thought is, is this ordinance covering, just like this lady said, I have no problem with everybody being included in it, but is everybody included in it? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, your name and address, please.
I'm Denise Collins-Robson, Livonia resident, family of origin since 1958, and my husband and I and our sons since 2000, I'm, since 220, no, I'm sorry, 1986. And I've spoken before on this for the NDO. Couple of things. I grew up in Livonia, and I think back of, there was a term I heard in the 80s, and I'm a social worker, just retired after 43 years, and it was white-bred communities. And it struck me that when I grew up, Livonia was a white-bred community. It was primarily Caucasian and it was primarily Christian of different denominations. I was raised Catholic personally. And that was a very limited life experience, till I went away to college at State, Go Green. And my sons, who are adults now, young adults now, they grew up in Livonia, went to K-12 like I did, my husband, 612, and they had a different experience in Livonia, which was positive. They saw more diversity. They saw a variety of people in their classmates, their teammates, in catechism, in scouts, things like that. And I'm so grateful that they got to see people from different cultures, races, religions and gender identities. I didn't know that when I was growing up. When I was at the council, at the meeting of the whole, and I heard the two main, my understanding, the two main resistances to the NDO. One seemed to be that people didn't believe that there was racism or discrimination in Livonia. They hadn't seen those incidents or felt them themselves, so they didn't think they were going on. But they are, and I have seen and heard of it as a social worker. Second was I heard statements from small businesses in the audience and on the council for concerns that this NDO would harm them, that they are well-meaning business owners, that they are, they feel as if they're inclusive and they're kind, but they feel that they may be, they may be reported as discriminating, and that could hurt their businesses, that could hurt their reputation. And I could understand if that was so, but what I'm seeing with the mayor's adjust, and the discussions about adjusting this to penalize for false statements, I think this is a really important thing to have in our city. As a social worker, I believe the three Cs, communication, cooperation and compromise. And I think just like our country's gonna have to do that now, we should too.
Two minutes. Thank you very much. We'll go on this side. Sir, good evening, your name and address, please.
Dave Martin, Livonia, Michigan. Before I start, I'd just like to thank the mayor for honoring Martin Luther King. I think that's a great idea. He's a great person. Excuse me. I understand we're still agonizing over this issue, and, and it's just, to me, it's just trying to make the city more woke, which we really don't need. I think what the 1982 NDO clearly states is, should be sufficient. We need to hear, you know, chapter 65, the expansion is not needed, as you will hear from my comments right now why it's not needed. Before moving forward with chapter 65 efforts, how about remembering what the federal government has worked so hard to ensure? The federal government explicitly states in many policies, all citizens will be well-protected at a variety of discrimination issues. Therefore, the federal government actions and policies are panacea for Livonia, not chapter 65. Everything exists today to protect all persons from discrimination in America. Therefore, there is really no reason to change the NDO. It's eclipsed by the federal government's programs. Here in a very brief review of the federal government's policies is, first, the Civil Rights Act of 1964. This act covers race, national origin, religion, sex, age, acts, age act, and was completed. When it was completed, right after that, they, they included the Civil Rights Act. This was Title Six, Title VII, known as the, known as the E.E. Employment, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. The Title, Title VII ensured that the protection of all workplace issues such as harassment, pregnancy, fair pay, transgender and sexual orientation status would, would be covered under that, under that agreement. Then, on top of the EEOC, the Fair Housing and Fair Employment Housing Act was passed to reinforce the employment issues-
Sir, you've reached your two minutes.
And also add some housing issues.
Sir, housing fairness. You've reached your two minutes, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. On this side, your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Bill Schmidt. I live in Livonia. I'd like to address a couple of points that were brought up at the previous meeting. One was, the first point I'd like to address is that of all the municipalities that are in the state of Michigan, that there's only 3% that have NDOs. I think that was a point that was brought up. Yet, that's kind of a, an argument of sophistry. And by that, I mean, that means that all cities, all municipalities are weighted equally. Beulah, lovely town. Not many folks live there as live in Livonia. Dexter, not many people live in Dexter as live in Detroit. Harbor Springs, another lovely place. 1,500 folks live there. But they don't equate, number-wise, to the amount of people that live here in Livonia. What we need to compare are cities of like size, or cities that we compete against for jobs. Cities like Kalamazoo, NDO, yep. Grand Rapids, Petal Creek. Saginaw, Flint, Bay City, Detroit. Even Warren is a bit of an NDO. Even Warren is a bit of an NDO. So please, when we're going to compare, let's really compare. Point two.
Thank you, sir. That's your two minutes. I appreciate it. If there's no further audience communication. Okay, if, if people would like to address the council, you really can't wait until the person's done speaking to come on up. Just kind of be on deck and ready so we can go and hear everybody who wants to speak. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
Lottie Cupler, Livonia, Michigan. I'm not the sharpest knife in the, in the drawer here.
Neither am I.
But, you know, the transsexual situation where we're imposing upon businesses and upon churches and upon our community, I can just tell you like this. If I were a person coming from the city, and I decide to retire in the country, and then we have cows, and we have stinky old pigs, and we have all of these things that the person in the city didn't really experience before, and now they're coming to the country, and then they start complaining that the pigs are stinking, and the noise is here, and the roosters are coming before you get out of bed, something's just not right here. Why should 1% of the people try to rule the rest of the community?
Thank you, ma'am. Last call for audience communication. I see none. Audience communication on this item is now closed. I'll note that we have a first read provided by Councilman McCullough. That first read is a version that adds a penalty for people who make false claims in regards to violations of the ordinance. I had initially put in my notes that I expected that this item would be out of committee. At this point in time, I would like to keep this matter in committee if there's no objection from my colleagues, in case we need additional meetings among ourselves to discuss this. With that being said, the meeting, Committee of the Whole on October 26 was adjourned at 9:25 PM. I don't, we don't have any motion?
Oh, pardon me. Okay.
Right? I think we can just leave it in committee without a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so item number 11 is reported out and concluded. We'll move on to item number 12. That's the proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law to amend section 020 and 030 to Title IX, Chapter 83, dealing with child abuse. Do I have a motion, counsel? Ms. Toy?
Is this a second reading?
First reading.
Oh, excuse me. This, this would be a first reading.
I had given up first reading, didn't I, last meeting?
No, last meeting was a study that I was up at. This should be the first reading.
I'd like to give a first reading.
Vice President Toy is now offering first reading on item number 12. Is there any council communication on 12? I see none. Is there any audience communication on item number 12? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take, well, nope, there's no vote on that. Excuse me. That will be carried through to a future regular meeting for a potential second reading. Item number 13 is the award of bid for towing and impound services coming to us from the Division of Police for a period of three years with two, three-year renewal options from budgeted funds. Counsel, do I have a motion on this?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich?
I'll offer an approving.
Support by Donavich, support by Mr. Barr. Is there any audience communication comments on this matter? I see none. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address item number 13? Good evening. Please tell me your name and address.
Shane Anders, 16550 Rackle Road. I provided a lengthy document. I apologize for the lateness, but I had to wait for the FOIA request. We received that, and I started reviewing it until probably an hour or so ago when we drafted that. I have some real concerns in regards to the city of Livonia's bid process. When I received the FOIA, I was amazed at the process. When municipalities choose to follow a process, and they publish that process, they need to stick to that process. And when they make changes after the fact, they taint the process. And I think that letter will do a lot better in regards to explaining what was tainted in the process through the FOIA request and the communications, and how they actually acted as a committee compared to the information they provided us at the time of bid prior to us submitting. So when you change the rules after you submit your bid, you can't make any changes. So those are my concerns. I appreciate all the concerns that they voiced on the NDO, and these are mine. So I greatly appreciate your time, and hopefully we'll have another chance to really dive in and, and look at this and work towards making Livonia's procurement process better, especially with all the millions of dollars that you annually approve and pass out to vendors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other audience communication on item number 13? I see none. We have a motion on the floor. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item 13 is approved, awarding the contract to Livonia Towing. Item number 14 is a request to amend the architectural contract, architectural contract through the qualification-based selection, QBS, process with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, Inc. from Public Service Division for the Architectural Design and Construction Phase Services for the Senior Center Addition and Recreation Center Improvement Project, Council Resolution 378-20. Do I have a motion, counsel?
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich?
I'd like to offer an approving for the design phase services in the amount of $644,686.
Support. Motion by Donavich, support by Toy. Anybody from the council have? Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is, in my belief, the first step in moving forward the potential senior citizen building. In the, in the meeting we had before, we talked about approving the design phase and the construction phase, but after subsequent conversations with council members and some of the dialogue from DPW, it is my belief that we should just, just approve the design phase of the new senior center, which is billed at hourly rates not to exceed $644,000.686. Eighty-six dollars, excuse me. That means that we're not necessarily going to spend all $644,000. We're initially going to make, we're initially going to be billed for the design phase of the new potential senior center. As we have those conversations with other funding partners like the county and other partners that want to help us with the new senior center, we can get some initial designs ready and, and move the process forward. I don't think at this time we should approve construction phase services in the amount of $349,000, because we're just not at that point right now. But I think this will help us move in the right direction to, to get the new senior center up and running, get money from other, the county and others that want to help the city out, and eventually have a new senior center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough?
Council President? If I, if I may, through the chairs to Mr. Rushlow. So obviously, this approves most of the design phase, which is good. I did, I do appreciate the, the new data, where it does break it up between programming, schematic design, design development, construction docs, and construction administration, which we're going to hold on. And I might need some clarification from my colleagues, but would this be an appropriate time to offer a motion to send the senior center construction into the Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee?
It would not be.
May I, may I do that, so ask for some support from my colleagues?
Support.
We have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
You can't have very, that's a different motion after this motion, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Anything else on the motion that's on the floor?
No, I, again, I, I'm happy that they did agree with the breakdown. I think that allows us to see the process and then not get on the hook for all of the design in case funding doesn't come forward.
Thank you. Anybody else on the council? Mr. Barr?
Yeah, just briefly, as I, anybody that watched the last meeting knows what I said there, I'll just summarize it here. I, I am very excited about this project's long-term, but this project hinges on getting a significant amount of money through the American Rescue Plan Act dollars from Wayne County, which we did finally get a report from the mayor's office about, an update about those proceedings since the last meeting, and I appreciate that. But just based on our discussions last time, there's not, there's not a sense of urgency yet to get going on. We don't have to get going on this now. And I would rather not be committing significant resources, hundreds of thousands of dollars like this, to a project, even if we expect it to proceed. I don't want to be committing that money when we don't yet know whether we even have the money to build the project. And I think we're expecting that within the next six months to have an answer one way or another. And based on the timelines we had last time, it will be, there will still be time at that point to get going on this process and still meet the timelines we have to meet. So for that reason, I won't be supporting this tonight, but it is not because I'm against the long-term project. I've made that clear. I just don't think that it's appropriate to be taking this up at this time. Thanks.
Vice President Toy?
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Rushlow. Mr. Rushlow, we've done this on other projects, haven't we? Gotten some money upfront for the design and all that? Through the years of service I've been here, I think we have.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay. I just wondered if we're on even ground, which I thought we were, because that's why I supported the young guy over here, so I just wondered. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the council? I see none. Is there any audience communication on item number 14?
Mr. Chair, I do have one thing, if I may, for a pointed clarification to the councilman's motion that's on the floor. The, in the additional data that was provided, the value that was presented in the councilman's proposed resolution does not include the initial planning and programming phase, which would be the very first phase. That's $51,992. The $644 and some additional change there is, is the core of the design phase services. That planning and programming phase would be the first phase, so that total for the programming and design would be 696. 678 would be the total for, for that. Just for your information-
Thank you, sir.
-that initial planning phase should be included in that.
Mr. Donavich, would you wish to amend your motion at this time?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Toy, you accept that as well?
Yes.
So the new amount would be an approval for $696,678?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Thank you, sir, for bringing that to our attention. Audience communication? I see none.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Barr?
I just thought of something. This is, if people could just follow me for a second, I want to explain why I'm going to do this. I honestly don't know where the council is on this. I haven't talked to my colleagues about this. It could be that I'm the only person that has the concerns that I have, okay? But what I don't want to happen is, if there are four people on council that agree with my concerns, what I would have preferred to see happen is that we table this. I don't want to see this defeated. Just table this for a more appropriate time, when, when we have the, when we know what our funding situation is. So for that reason, I'd like to offer a substitute resolution to table this and see if I have support. How this goes, well, I'll see, how this goes will help us determine the way forward the rest of the meeting. Thanks.
Okay, there's a motion by Barr to substitute the motion on the floor. The motion would be to table this item. There's support from Ms. McIntyre.
Mr. President? Sorry, I know I spoke there, but just one more thing to tack on. I should have waited till it was approved to, to explain, but what, what I'm trying to say is, the vote that we're doing here, if this, if this substitute resolution fails, that's a pretty good indicator of what's going to happen on the other vote. But if this is successful, it at least keeps us from denying the other one. That's the reasoning for what I'm doing. So, thanks.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Just, just kind of going over everything, I, I get, I get nervous when we table an item like this. So for everybody in the audience that doesn't have all the 100 pages of the packet, so what we're talking about is the senior center construction. And senior center construction projects start off with the design phase, and it's an initial planning and programming. Right now, the city is still looking for some funds that we won't basically find out if we have it or not, potentially for five months. So right now, we're, but the problem is, is at such time, the county potentially is going to say, hey, we want to plan right away. So by us prolonging this, we could indeed lose out with potential funding from the county as they would be wanting to see something and seeing if we're ready to go. As I stated before, when we talked about this, the administration was asking for a lot more money. And the design phase is broken into five distinct categories. One of them's initial planning. That's kind of the, basically the start of the project. You put together your team, you start looking at everything. Number two is schematic design. That's where you bring in all of the players and basically start boxing out a project, basically boxing out construction site. Then you move on to design development. That puts all of the thought into a thousand-page document. Then construction documents basically goes out to bid. I won't bore you with all of this, but these are five distinct phases that all have a dollar amount. So the last study meeting, it was brought up-
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
We're getting a little off-topic here in regards to the substitute motion.
Yes. I'm just, I just, before we vote on this, I just want to basically put out there that any delay on time, any delay on time, if I may, would potentially lose this project and funding. Thank you.
Mr. Donavich, then Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am not going to be supporting the substitute motion. Totally understand making sure we're being fiscally responsible for dollars. In my mind, I would rather spend a few hundred thousand dollars now to get the plans ready so that we can be in the running for millions of dollars from other funding partners. It is my intent to have the original motion passed tonight, and then I'd like to see the committee option offered for whether that be the Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee, or the Senior Citizens Family and Environment Committee to have ongoing discussions immediately, so we can invite our, the different partners that are helping us, whether that be DPW, Capital Relations, our lobbying firm that's helping with the county right now, our Wayne County Commissioner. There are multiple partners behind the scenes right now helping with the success of this. And in my mind, we have the potential to get millions of dollars from the county so that we don't have to go out for bonds. We don't have to ask our city, our city for a senior millage of some sort to fund a new senior citizen building. So the way my mind is rationalizing this now is, we spend a few hundred thousand dollars now-
Mr. Donavich?
One second, Mr. President, please.
We're getting off track of the substitute motion a little bit.
I'm following up on my point. Thank you, Mr. President. So that is why I'm not going to be supporting the substitute motion. Totally makes sense. Let's make sure we're very fiscally responsible for dollars. I absolutely agree with that. But that's kind of my rationale as why I will not be supporting the substitute motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. McIntyre?
We have lobbyists working for us on this specific issue. We are, we have two county commissioners who keep us very close to what's going on. We're not going to get this awarded to us on a Tuesday and then be told that we need to have the plans by Friday. I, a few hundred thousand dollars is not a lot of money when you're talking about the city's total budget, but it's a lot of money when you're talking about taxpayer money. And so I don't see any harm in putting this, tabling this for right now, and seeing how this is coming along before we commit this money. So that's why I'm supporting the substitute motion. Thank you.
Mr. Barr?
Thank you. Just, I want to express that Councilman McCullough and Councilman Donavich raised up very respectable points. I just want to address the two of them. One, the timeline issue. We asked, I asked detailed questions about that last time. We are, we are not in a timeline crunch on this. We, we discussed that in detail last time. Number two, is, if, if indeed it was true that we were going to need to show more fleshed-out plans than what we have right now in order to be, in order to get this money, that should have been revealed to us in March when this first came up. We had meetings, I believe it was in March, if my memory serves correctly, when the mayor first gave a presentation on this, a very excellent presentation, I might add. As I said, I'm very excited about the project. We've had a discussion since. Never once has there been an indication that we need this level of detail for a plan. So if that is the case, we should have known that a long time ago. I don't think it is the case. So, thanks.
Is there any audience communication on the substitute motion? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on substituting the motion that's on the table?
So we're taking a vote on Mr. Barr's motion, correct?
Substitute the motion.
Okay. Councilmember McCullough?
No.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
No.
No.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
No. The substitute motion is denied. We will go back to the original motion on the floor to approve the contract in the amount of $696,678, as was offered by Mr. Donavick and supported by Ms. Toy. Is there any additional counsel comment on this matter? I see none. Is there any audience communication on this matter? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
President, Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
No.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
President Jolly?
Aye. The contract is approved.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavick?
I'd like to refer the subject matter of the new senior center to the Senior Citizens, Families and Environment Committee.
Support. Okay, so we have a motion by Donavick, support by Barr, to refer this matter to the Senior Citizens Committee of the council. Any additional comment from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilman Donavick. Where, wherever the committee it does go to, I think that our goal, I'm not speaking on behalf of my colleagues, but my initial thought process was, is not to bore you again with the five phases of the project, but that we could have multiple meetings at different milestone points with administration to ensure that the project is going above board and, and making sure that you guys have the resources you need from council. Thank you.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to see Capital Relations, the lobbying firm, the mayor's office, DPW, and all the partners involved in this process to please come to that committee hearing chaired by Vice President Toy. I think it'd be a very informative meeting to really understand the depth of the future of this and see how the city can get a lot of dollars from the county that's available to multiple communities, some 42, 43 communities within the county, and how we can have the new state-of-the-art senior facility. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. McIntyre?
I'm not opposed to having meetings, but something that my colleague said concerns me, that we need to have meetings to ensure this is above board. I would certainly hope that we don't need meetings to ensure that everyone involved in this project is working above board. So, that would not be my intention of the meetings. It would be to monitor the progress and be updated on issues, complications, dates, but I, I hope we don't need to ensure that people are above board. Thank you.
Any audience communication on the motion referring the new senior center construction, potential construction, to the Committee of Senior Citizen Families, et cetera? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The referral to committee is approved. We'll move on to item number 15. That's an award of bid from the Department of Parks and Rec for utility work to prepare Ben Chalani Playground Site for Proposed Comfort Station with the installation, with the installation in 2023 from budgeted funds.
So move.
Motion from Toy.
Support.
Support from McCullough. We'll go to Mr. Davis.
I've always been told, you have an approving resolution, be quiet, but I'm happy to answer any questions council may have on this.
You learn quick.
Smart man.
Smart guy. Any questions from the council for Mr. Davis or comments? I see none. Any questions or, well, any comments from the audience? I see none, and your inclination was correct, sir. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 15 is approved. Moving on to 16. Thank you, Mr. Davis. A request to approve the City of Livonia Afsmi Union Local 192 Contract Agreement for the period of December 1, 2022 through November 30th of 2025 from the Civil Service Department. Good evening, Ms. Libel.
So move.
I need a motion first.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by McCullough. Any questions or comments from the council?
No.
Okay. Any audience comments?
Mr. Chair, one quick question, please.
Mr. Barr?
Through the chair to Ms. Libel. I, if my memory serves me correctly, this would typically go on a study meeting first. Am I wrong about that, or can you, what's the reason why we're seeing this the first time? I, I intend to support it. I was just curious procedurally why it's coming straight to a regular meeting.
Mr. Barr, if I can address that. I don't think we're required to put anything on a study agenda. That's just-
Right.
It's a process that we've come accustomed to. I believe the start period for this is December 1st.
Okay.
So, we will not have a council meeting beforehand, I believe.
Okay. I didn't realize that we were already into December for our next meeting.
Right. There's Thanksgiving coming up here.
All right, thanks.
So, I think we want this approved, if we're going to approve it on December 1st. So, Ms. Libel, not to put you on the spot, can you give us an overview of this contract, please, and its pertinent details?
Oh, thank you. I'd love to. We negotiated this contract with an eye towards retaining our current Livonia work family, as well as attracting new talent. We want to continue to be an employer of choice. The first thing we did is we expanded our benefits package. That means people get some extra time off, personal time, sick time, and vacation time. We improved our retirement benefits, both for our 401A, sorry, I had to double-check my brain on that one, and our retirement health benefits. We included Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day as a paid holiday, and we also added a flexible work schedule that we're going to put on a three-year trial basis to see if that is something that can help us attract additional employees, as well as provide, continue to provide excellent service to our, for our city, but also make sure our employees get to have a more flexible schedule. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Libel. Any questions or comments from the council?
No.
Ms. Toy?
It sounds very nice, very good. Thank you for opening up, you know, for all the other alternatives in light of having problems, if you will, finding employees. I don't want to say we're having a lot of problems, but it's certainly not the easiest task we've ever been, had around here. But thank you very much for all your hard work and your team as well.
Thank you.
And our administration.
I was very lucky to have a collaborative process and a good team.
Yes. Ms. McIntyre?
We, we traditionally have not had a difficult time finding employees and, for the positions that are represented by Local 192. That said, we hear every day, and we, we had some data tonight from Mr. Libel, regarding a general worker shortage. And so, I think that looking forward and being proactive and having appropriate benefits and reasons for employees to stay and be employer choi, choice is important. And I, I'd just like to congratulate you and your team on getting this done.
Thank you so much.
Any audience communication on item number 16? I see none. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item 16 is approved, and we have a contract. Thank you very much. Item number 17 is a request to approve adjustments in salary and benefits for non-represented city employees for the period of December 1, 2022 through November 30th of 2025, again from the Civil Service Department. Ms. Libel?
Mr. Chair.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by McCullough. Any questions from the council? Okay. Any comment from the audience in regards to this? Ms. Libel, can you give us a brief overview of what this is and why you're bringing it before us?
Yes, this is for unrepresented employees. Those are employees that are not otherwise covered in a bargaining unit, and they get substantially the similar benefits that they, that they would have gotten if they were represented. I can walk you through it, but it will sound a lot like the 192 benefits.
That's all we needed to hear, I think. So, if there's no comment from the council or the audience, I ask Ms. Nash to take the vote on 17.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 17 is approved. Item 18 is a request to approve adjustments in salary and benefits for non-appointed department heads for the period December 1, 22 through November 30th, 25 from the Civil Service Department.
So move.
Ms. Toy?
I gave everybody raises tonight.
And Mr. McCullough. Spoken like a true politician.
[laughing]
All right. Any comments from the council on 18 or audience communication? I see none. Again, Ms. Libel, one second, highlight. What is this?
This is for non-appointed department heads, and it is substantially the same as the benefits that the 192 department, I mean, the 192 bargaining unit got. Would also like to tack on a big thank you all for, thank, thank you to all of you and to our administration for supporting this and giving us good guidance.
Thank you very much. I think we have a good city team in general.
They do.
So, with that being said, no audience communication. Ms. Nash, take the vote on 18, please.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 18 is approved. That concludes the agenda for the regular eve, or regular meeting this evening. We set aside 30 minutes at the beginning for audience communication, but we also have a period at the end for the audience, if they have not spoken to us already, for audience communication at the beginning, which I don't think anybody did, to address any items that are not on the agenda. Is there any audience communication
at the end of the meeting here? Going once, going twice? Oh, I saw you. You didn't have to run. Sorry.
[inaudible]
No, it's cool. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Emily Baumann, and I live in Westland. And I just wanted to say thank you. For those who do know, I was on the ballot on November 8th as running for state senate to cover for the district of, the fifth district, which included Westland, Canton, Garnet City, Inkster, and Southwest Livonia. So, I wanted to say thank you to all those that voted for me. I also want to thank you to a huge team that actually helped me, support me, and made a really exciting campaign. I have to tell you, and I've told people this more and more times, I enjoy campaigning. Obviously, I don't enjoy losing, but, but I also, one of the things I think is important is that my reasons for stepping into this race have not changed. And as I said when I ran for an office two years ago, I'm not going away. I, I stepped in because I really wanted to, I really want, I'm at the point in my life where I want to serve my community more than I have in the past, and I still have that. So, I, I will say that I'm going to keep an email address open called emilylistens@emilybaumann.com, and you are always welcome to reach out, because I, I want to hear people, I want to know people, I want to understand. And it's something that's very critical, something I've worked hard at over the last at least 10 years now in my business. And I just want to encourage people to continue to reach out to me, and you won't, I'm not going away. You're going to see me in this different cities in different ways. So, again, I want to say thank you, and just, I, I really appreciate the support that I received, both in the city as well as in the district. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Bob Guzik, Livonia resident. I'm, I just want to, I, I believe a, a previous resident gave some erroneous data to, to the-
In regards to what, sir?
Um, the 1% of the population being gay. I just want to correct it. It's-
So, that was an agenda item? We can't really go back and visit those agenda items?
Okay, so, even, even if I'm just correcting a number of the gay population that, you know-
You can make random, not random, you can make, you can provide information, but we can't go back to agenda items. So-
May I provide information?
There you go.
Which I find fascinating and surprising, actually. According to the Census Bureau Household Pulse Survey, which is apparently a part of the Census Bureau, over 20 million adults in the, in the U.S. identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, or transgender, nearly 8% of the nation's total adult population. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. Mary Kavanaugh. I am a Redford resident, and I just wanted to come and say thank you. I have, I ran for state senate in District 6, which includes Redford Township, Northwest Detroit, the city of Livonia, and Farmington, Farmington Hills, and I was successful. So, before serving, I graduated from Wayne State with an anthropology degree. I currently am in the House District, state representative for House District 10, which includes Redford Township and Northwest Detroit. And I'm just pleased to see such collaboration on the city council. Looking forward to getting to know Livonia a little bit. I worked in Detroit Public Schools prior to serving in the house, as well as serving as a direct care worker right here in Livonia. So, I'm just excited to get to know a little bit more of your guys' priorities and each and every one of you. So, that's it.
Yeah. So, just to be clear, you are one of our three state representatives at this point. Ms. Toy?
Yep, that was-
One of the two state senators.
Oh, state senator, I'm sorry. Apologies.
It's okay.
She moved up. Upper chamber.
Oh, she's following in your footsteps.
Upper chambers.
Yeah, and I am in the majority, but I say regardless of party, I do believe it's going to be very essential for yourselves to get your guys' priority across the line, regardless which party I am. So, I look forward to serving you guys and focusing on your guys' priorities as well as the mayor's.
Senator Omost, could you tell us what part of Livonia you're in exactly?
It's about 70% of Livonia, so it goes from Joy to Merriman all the way to 96, and then it cuts to Hagerty, but all the way north from 96.
Okay. Well, congratulations. You're also a majority. First time in 40 years.
First time in 40 years. Hopefully, we can hold on to it.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. If there is no other audience communication this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Support.
Motion by McIntyre, support by, we'll say McCullough, because I saw him. I think